Let's begin a regular meeting in Des Moines City Council. And Dave, would you lead us in a place?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year to everybody. And let the record reflect that all council members are present except Carmen Scott. Is there a motion to excuse?
Move to excuse.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Carmen would like me to pass along to you that she got out of the hospital today with the second part of the hip surgery she had. She's doing quite well, is in good spirits. She won't be present for this council meeting, of course, and the next council meeting at the advice of her doctor. But again, everything is fine, and I took the liberty of sending her some flowers. Nobody's an objection to that. Tony, is there any correspondence?
No, Your Honor.
Before we go into the comments from the public, let me advise the council that I'm pulling one item from the agenda this evening, and that is the second item of new business, which is the City of Des Moines Police Guild letter. I have a meeting with the Guild tomorrow morning, and based on the outcome of that meeting, we'll determine whether or not that item comes back for the council next Thursday. So please remove that from your agenda. At this time, we welcome comments from citizens and from the public. As your name is called, would you please come over to the roster over here to my right, state your full name and address for the record, and please limit comments to three minutes or less. The first speaker is Mr. Pete Daigle. Good evening, Mr. Daigle.
My address is 20131 Marine View Drive, Southwest, Normandy Park, Washington. And I live now in the house I grew up in from the time I was about six weeks old. I'm here to talk about Rosie. And the last time I spoke in front of you was several weeks ago, and it was before the investigation as to criminal intent in this matter. And I said I didn't really, I was not very concerned about the criminal investigation at that time, and the reason I said that is because I didn't expect there to be any criminal charges brought against anyone in this matter. And there haven't been, it's not surprising. What I did say, though, was I was very concerned about where we go from here. I want to say that I have no foul feelings towards police departments or police in general. If it weren't for a particular police chief in Normandy Park in the mid to late 60s, I probably wouldn't be the same person I am today, somebody who stood behind me and walked with me. When I hear about police officers being murdered on the street, it breaks my heart, just like it does for just about everybody, I'm sure. But when I hear about incidents like this, all I can say is, you know, I own a business here in Sea-Tac, Washington. If I had employees that were acting in a vulgar way, they wouldn't be my employee very long. If I had employees that were treating my customers, the people that I'm serving, in an improper manner, they would be gone in a New York minute. Our police force is here to service, and I do not believe we have been served very well up till now. And now we find out the police department or the police guild is even trying to tell us who we should have as our freely elected officials. There is a word for that kind of state, you know, and I don't think that's the one we want to live in here in the United States of America. We've made choices on this a long time ago, who the police are, who our elected officials are, and what their positions and what their duties are. So I'm not very concerned about the criminal investigation, but I am very concerned about where we go from here. And we're going to be watching, and we're going to be very vigilant about what we can do as citizens as we go from here, and we're going to be very, we're not going to, we're not going to be looking for changes, we're going to be expecting them. So this is where I'm coming from.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next speaker is Mr. Vic Wright. Good evening, Mr. Wright.
I'm Vic Wright. I live at 31600 126th Avenue Southeast, Sovereign, Washington. I've been coming to the meeting since the Rosie incident. I am related to the dog. It's a horrific act. What I'm here for tonight is the follow-up to a horrific act. So far, the city council, though they have been very kind, they have been very understanding, they've been very compassionate about this issue, has not offered an opinion either way about this issue as to whether or not the police department did or did not do their job. What they've offered is a fair and reasonable third-party review of the situation. They've offered a way for this to come to light, whether it was good or bad for the police department, which is what their job as elected officials is to do. For the police union to send a letter requesting the resignation of the mayor of this town, for the police union to have that audacity, I can tell you, what I see is, this town has a pond. At the beginning, I believe there was a little layer of scum on top of the pond. I now believe with this letter, the scum goes to the bottom. It's time to clean the pond. Get rid of the police that have this attitude, get rid of the police chief that has this attitude. You people, I hate to say it, have a problem in this town that's going to have to be resolved with the termination of people who are not suited for the job they are in. To actually commit this heinous crime and then stand up and point the finger at somebody else is absolutely unbelievable. It's above reproach. Nobody anywhere should have to deal with that kind of environment, driving around in the street in a city-supplied car carrying a gun. These people need to be held accountable. There should be terminations based solely on the lack of integrity that letter required to write. We're all going to be watching. The future of this city depends on the actions that come from this. I hope the City of Des Moines backs the city council, who's shown nothing but integrity up to this point, and I hope they help you, and I hope you get this resolved. This can't continue in any city. This is, it's like a cancer. It needs to be resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. The next speaker is Didi Law.
I live at 19909 Marine View Drive, Normandy Park, and I still have a cold, so excuse me. There are thousands of us writing in to support for Rosie. It's online, and I don't know if you are getting all the letters. They're being emailed.
We are, yes.
This one particularly struck a lot of us, and I wanted to give her a voice tonight, and I did get her permission. So this is from Emmylou Tucker. My email to the mayor and city council. Dear Mayor Scheckler and council members, if it was possible to become more horrified by the actions of the Des Moines, Washington Police Department than I was at the shooting of poor Rosie, it has now happened. Calling for the mayor's resignation is so beyond the pale that it defies description. The honor and integrity of any person or group is no more clearly evidenced than by their willingness to admit when they make a mistake. The dash cams released in Rosie's murder only confirm what thousands of us believed earlier. These officers were bent on killing Rosie from the beginning. What's much worse and more horrifying is that they enjoyed it and they made a joke of it. I'm sorry. They wave guns around a residential neighborhood like they are band batons. If their excuse is that the joking was a reaction to the fright Rosie gave them, then there is even more reason to release these supposed officers from police duty. They are too ignorant of dog language and not stable enough to be entrusted and protected, protecting the public. They're only concerned with protecting themselves, that's pretty for them. I have never, I have seen neither written word nor audio nor video which warrants any of you resigning from your posts. The police created this horrible, horrible result for poor Rosie, her family and the dog owners everywhere. The worldwide black eye on the Des Moines Police Department has is their doing, not yours. They're the ones who need to resign. Every citizen of Des Moines ought to be terrified for their lives and the lives of their children and pets. I keep coming back to the fact it took multiple shots in parts of the body guaranteed to inflict maximum pain before poor Rosie died. These yahoos are either bloodthirsty or such poor shots that they should be relieved of duty on that basis only. For the sake of all that should be good, fair, honorable, and dare I say it, holy in the world, I beg and implore you all, see that these officers are relieved of their positions by whatever legal means you have to use. There is a way you will help to redeem the status of Des Moines around the world, satisfy your own sense of honor, and restore the faith of thousands of people. Sincerely yours, Emmylou. Do I have another second?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you know, I live in Normandy Park, and I feel like sometimes I'm a sitting duck because I'm always here, and I'm like, oh, kind of scared. But I feel like if I sit by passively watching, if I don't stand up for what I believe in, how can I expect that of all of you? So that's why I keep coming back. And there are so many people that are so passionate about this, that this could have happened to any one of our pets, and that poor dog was not doing anything wrong. She was just trying to stay in her own yard, and they hunted her down. And, you know, all the comments, nice after the ventshires go off. He didn't even whimper, "Oh, hate to shoot him in his own yard." Was the camera still on? Officers waving gun recklessly around. Four squad cars to capture one dog for a city that is, I think, underfunded? That doesn't make any sense, okay? I mean, I don't think these guys should be on the street. I hope you feel the same way. I really hope that something is done. I really, really do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, and I was going to offer you one, too.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who did not sign up or may have come in late that would like to address the council at this time? Okay, we'll move forward with any board and committee reports and councilman comments, and we'll start with Dave.
No report.
Melissa.
Tuesday evening, I had the pleasure of attending the Healthy Highline Communities Coalition meeting for Matt. I think he's been the lead person taking care of that up to this point, and it was, I left very energized, very invigorated. I have a passion for preventing childhood obesity in our schools and especially at our at-risk youth. And one of the discussions we really got into is what will the council's role in this grant be? And so we had some strong conversation about policy versus programs, that we're really here as a city to support the staff as they come forward with programs implemented through this grant with supportive policy, that as a city, we would say, we also support these initiatives. Right now, one of the things that the school district is working on is a Safe Routes to School program, which would implement a walk and bike audit. School staff, parents, and students will work with Bicycle Alliance and the Feet First staff to take a tour of the neighborhood, to determine best routes, potential hazards, maps indicating barriers to walking in community assets, training to promote safe walking to school, followed up with school-wide kickoff events. And the district was looking to choose three elementary schools in the area that would fit the criteria, one of which was a free and reduced at-risk population. So they had already chosen a school in Sea-Tac and one in Burean, and so they were looking for the third school, and I had really pushed that they look towards Midway Elementary as being our third at-risk elementary school, and really looking at the geographic area where our students walk up there. I thought it would be a great opportunity, kind of in partnership with our Gateway Project, really analyzing also the walkability of the streets, the bikeability of the streets, and encouraging, you know, families to walk to school versus driving to school. So at this point, we will be meeting at the, for Saturday Coffee Clutch, to kind of discuss as electeds what our next steps are.
Regarding the grant, you mean?
With, yeah, what our role as electeds are. I think that that was kind of, I walked away from it feeling like there was a little bit of chicken and egg with it, what comes first. Do we identify as electeds, what do we do to support the program? Or do we let staff come to us with, this is what we need from you, support the program? So we're looking to do a little bit of a work session to really decide what is our formal vision as electeds, as how we are going to support the program.
Well, Melissa, is Rose Clark the president?
Yes.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the last two meetings I've been unable to attend, and I was representing the city council on that group. As Matt will tell you, we were very involved in initiation of that whole process. Actually, I have to give kudos to Matt because he's the one to drag me into it on Saturdays. Remember, Matt?
Yes, I do.
But I'm glad to see you've shown an interest in this, so here's what I'm going to do. Consider it as official. You're now our representative, congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Does that conclude your report?
It does, thank you.
It does. Matt?
I just have a couple things. First of all, I want to thank Melissa for being able to attend the meeting when I was unable, and I look forward to partnering with her. I know that it's important that they have elected officials involved in these meetings, and the policy work that's necessary, I think, is going to, we need to have consistent representation. And I know that I've struggled with it a little bit at times, and so it will be good to know that Bob, just in case Melissa and I can't make it, that you're on deck.
Well, she's now officially the representative.
Yes, and I will be happy to take her, be her wingman, how's that?
There you go.
I do need to ask the council, I have a conflict and am not able to attend the Suburban Cities Association PIC meeting on January 12th, and I wanted to see if there was someone who wanted to attend that meeting. I don't know who my second is on that. I have been able to attend, I think, all but one last year. So it's seven o'clock Wednesday on January 12th, and the meeting will be addressing some early policy positions. So if there's someone who feels that they may be able to do that, they can, rather than decide right now, please let me know. And that concludes my remarks.
So you'll just be missing the one, is what you're saying?
Yes, it's not normally a problem. It's just that this is the first of the year. And unfortunately, because I can't make this one, I...
Okay. Dan?
Just a follow-up to that, why don't we have an alternate? I mean, I think most cities do have alternates. Were you, Tony, going to be an alternate on that because you're involved as...
Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Pina, but I think just about everyone who's a member of PIC is an elected.
Actually, they are.
I don't think there are any appointed officials who even act as alternatives or alternates to that.
There are some city managers who attend periodically over a particular set of issues, but yes, it needs to be an elected at the table to vote.
That may be something we should consider. We all received something from the Kent Chamber of Commerce, and I just found something in here that I think maybe we might want to write a note to the Kent Chamber about. On page 12 of their booklet, that they've sent 4,000 of these out to, they talk about all the educational facilities they've got, including Highline Community College is located in West Kent. Has it, have they annexed Des Moines yet, or...
Oh. Actually, do you have one building? One building that...
Well, they have, they've been jealous of Des Moines for so many years, they've always referred to us as West Kent.
Well, I read that, and I didn't know if we had been annexed or not.
It's their effort to go March to the Sea, Dan, that's what it is.
I attended the suburban cities meeting last night for members who represent the Suburban Cities Association on regional board and committees, and I do this every year, and I think I give a report every year. There are 26 such committees throughout the region that members of suburban cities participate in, including Regional Policy Committee, Regional Water Quality Committee, Puget Sound Regional Council Boards, Growth Management, Local Hazardous Waste, Water Quality, Solid Waste, et cetera. So I'm on the Board of Health representing them, and I attended that. There were, each of these committees got up and said the things they'd be working on for the year. I'm just going to mention two. One, because I'm on the Board of Health, that the big issue is safety net funding. You're probably all aware that the governor has talked about removing funding for basic health plan, for health care, for what used to be GAU, I don't know what they call it now. And I think, you know, even if you don't care about people who can't afford health care, you might care if you have to wait in an emergency room, because that's where those people are going to go if they don't have health care. And while you're sitting there with a broken leg, waiting your turn, because the emergency rooms are overburdened, you might want to think about contacting your legislator to talk about keeping the safety net funding for health care for the people in our state. You know, in three more years, if the Republicans don't prevail, there will be a national health care system of some sort, not administered by the government, but everybody's going to be covered one way or the other. And we have to survive until then. So that's what I would ask you to do. So the other issue that's of concern to me, because I use the trail very often, is the Flood Management Committee talked about what was happening with the Howard Hansen Dam, and within nine months, all the repairs should be completed. But that doesn't mean that the trail will be usable or the sandbags removed from the Green River watershed this summer. They have to go through a winter after the repairs are made to make sure that everything holds. So not the summer of 2011, but the summer of 2012, the Green River Trail System and watershed should be back to where it's supposed to be. And that's my report. Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, the temporary ad hoc franchise.
Temporary?
Which has been meeting for years now, I think. Had a meeting this evening. We had three issues on the agenda. The first was a discussion about solid waste contracts, and administration is trying to put together a request for proposals for solid waste companies to come and make proposals about garbage collection for the city. It would include rates, types of services, there's a contract put together, and it is on a fairly fast-track process. So we were being asked policy questions from the three of us on the committee to give them direction, which are really questions that the full council should have had the opportunity to deal with, but this proposal's going out...
A week from tomorrow.
A week from tomorrow, so full council will not have that opportunity. So it would probably be worthwhile to, for the mayor to schedule a time for council to be briefed on this subject so that they at least understand what the questions were and could even provide input soon enough for...
And I think our discussion, we gave our consultants enough flexibility that, I think, either way, for council to go on a variety of issues, the responses we'll get from the solid waste companies will allow us to go where we need to go. Also, since we are required by law to have a 60-day window between issuing the RFP and requiring the proposals to come in, we have time to issue addendum or addenda if we need to. And we talked about that, and I think having a discussion with council the first few weeks after the RFP goes out will give us enough time to make those adjustments if the full council wants us to.
I would think that getting the council briefed on this will help the process later on, as we're being asked to make decisions, will at least have the foundation from which to make them. But council members did share their thoughts. Probably the biggest policy question that there were a variety of opinions on was, do you structure, do you have them structure the rates so that it's what's called a full cost of service? Or do you incentivize the rates so that people would try and use smaller cans, and they pay much less while people using larger cans pay much more? So that's probably the biggest policy question we discussed, but there were a variety of other things. There were two other issues that the committee discussed. One, they both having to do with water district franchises. One was Lake Haven. Lake Haven was making a request to deal with the Lane versus Seattle Supreme Court decision, and they actually wanted agreement where they would not charge the city for fire protection if the city agreed not to assume the district or establish a utility tax if we had the authority to establish one, which we don't have at this point in time. The committee recommended to staff that we actually create a franchise agreement which deals with those issues, and right now, their franchise agreements has expired. So the committee was saying, let's come up with a new franchise agreement and offer it to them. Then the second conversation is Water District 54, whose franchise agreement is also expiring, and they just asked to renew the existing contract for 50 years. And the committee said no, basically saying, we need one franchise that fits all, leaning towards the 10-year term. And so those were the directions we gave to staff. And I don't know, Matt, Dave, do you want to add anything to that report?
The only thing I would add is, relative to the solid waste franchise, we gave the consultant a number of different potential pricing models for responses to come back that would deal with a number of the issues. So in a lot of ways, even though we haven't had a chance to discuss it as a council, I think we actually have him coming back with enough, the RFP should come back with enough information, we can make informed decisions.
We may have too many choices to make.
I think that's probably what's going to happen.
And in regard to Lake Haven, since annexation, we have not had a franchise agreement, I believe is what staff told us. So that would be a new, that would be, actually, a franchise agreement would be a new thing with Lake Haven. So that's my report.
Okay. And again, I'll be meeting with the Police Guild tomorrow morning. I've invited Councilmember Musser to join me, and the results of that, of course, will determine if I bring this back to the council or not, but in either event, a full report will be given to the council and to the extent that I can, a public report, too. All right, so we'll move on to a consent calendar, or actually, I'm sorry, admin reports, no report? Okay, and a consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is the approval of minutes. The motion is to approve the minutes from the regular meetings of December 2, 9, and 16, 2010, and the special meeting to hold an executive session of December 2nd. Item number two, local government investment pool. The motion is to adopt draft... The motion is to adopt draft resolution number 10-213, authorizing deposit or withdrawal of funds in the local government investment pool in accordance with the provisions of the Washington Administrative Code for the purpose of investment as stated in the Washington Administrative Code, describing the names and titles of the officials authorized to order deposit or withdrawal of funds, and superseding resolution number 775. Item number three, Des Moines Police Management Association collective bargaining agreement. The motion is to adopt draft resolution 11-001, approving the collective bargaining agreement between the Des Moines Police Management Association and the City of Des Moines, and authorizing the city manager to sign it substantially in the form as submitted. And that, Your Honor, concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there any council member that wishes to remove the consent calendar item? Dan, which one?
Well, I don't really want to remove an item. I want to say that any vote I have will not include the collective bargaining agreement.
Item three.
I've not participated in that.
Okay.
Also, in the minutes for December 2, the minutes for December 2, somewhere in there, you had to leave the meeting and Dave took over, and that is not shown here. So, if, I would just add that if we pass that, it's with the understanding that that information will be added.
That will be added, then. Melissa?
Also, not to remove, but on the minutes of the December 2 executive session, I was actually present at that meeting and it's not reflected in the minutes.
Have those corrections been noted? Thank you. Yes. Matt?
Well, I don't know that I want to pull it. I have a question about item number two, just in the way it's presented. The, this has to do with who's authorized to deposit or withdraw funds. And I don't know if it's a requirement, but it's, and Paula, don't take this wrong. I don't understand why we are actually naming, we have the position in here. It says the City of Des Moines designates the Finance Director as the authorized individual. Why we specify the person's name? Because the more you put names in these policies, the more often they have to be revisited. And my thought is, if it doesn't have to be there, I think the position makes it clear. That way, if Paula were to take a leave of absence or something like that, or were to be on vacation, the acting Finance Director would be authorized. Otherwise, it's not Paula.
The reason for this is the state wants to know who is authorized to make deposits and withdrawals from the local government investment pool. And this mechanism is a way, they, and in the verbiage, they want, as soon as if I resigned, they will want a new resolution identifying a new individual who has that authority. That is the reason why. I would agree with you, I thought, just generic Finance Director, but I think they feel that they need that so that they will be notified who's authorized.
Has that addressed your concern?
It, it addresses the concern. I just, I don't think it's a good idea.
All right, I know where you're headed with that. Scott?
So, this is the same issue I have concerns about. So, as I understand, section three, it's adopting the attached transaction authorization form. And it goes on into section five, in a strange way, to say, the form is incorporated into this resolution or hereafter amended by delegated authority. It looks as though we might be authorizing the Finance Director to continue to reissue the form as employees change over time. I would think that that should really best with the city manager, not the Finance Director, in terms of who it is that certifies the form or author. So, you know, this came at us, this is the first time, we've not really had any conversation about it. I, too, would prefer that we just been able to authorize the city manager to sign the form and continue to send it in as, as people change, and not name the city manager. We could name the city manager as position and then, because, you know, as is what's before us, the last time we did this was the Finance Director, James Hathaway, which has been, you know, and, and it got missed and forgotten. So, there's got to be a better way to deal with it once and have it be administrative than having to be council action all the time. So, instead of adopting it tonight, I'd like to ask if administration can't figure out how to do that, even though the state may prefer it be their way. It seems to me that we should be able to say, it's going to be our way.
Well, you can, but we had, when I came on board here, we, we did a revised form for them, but we did not change the resolution. Treasury Murphy never required us to, the new treasurer does. So, this is what they're asking for.
Want a clarification?
Go ahead, well, all right. I'll take, no, I'll take you first and then Dave.
Okay. So, Paula, you made a statement. So, there's an authorization form, and then there's the resolution.
Correct.
The form is attached at the last.
Okay, my, my point is, so we have an authorization form. Our resolution has said somebody from 1994.
Right.
But you've been authorized to do it since you came on board.
Correct.
Because she filled out the form that said she was.
Okay, then, then I want to, I want to change my statement from, I would like to remove it.
Okay, I more or less concluded, actually, when Scott started talking it, it has been removed. So, I'll let you argue among yourselves, who wants to be on record for the removal? Actually, I'll recognize you, Matt, on that. And Dave, did you have something to add to that?
If it's going to be pulled, I'll speak to it once we get to it.
All right, it has been pulled. Is there any other item on the consent calendar you want to address at this time? If not, is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Matt?
Very simply, for reasons that have come in our earlier, our discussion just before this, I really believe that as much as the state may want us to name the Finance Director, there is a form that provides authorization. I think if we clearly state the Finance Director, I think it is better policy and better policy management. So, I, that would be my motion if we decided to carry this forward.
And may I interrupt, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I think the most important thing for us to make sure we do is not violate state law, including the WAC.
Yeah, that's my concern.
So, I think we need to make sure we know exactly what the requirements are of the WAC are.
Okay.
And I think it's quoted in the old resolution, I don't see it quoted in the new one. And if the WACs also give the state treasurer the authority to determine how, the form that they want these authorizations to be made, we may end up being between a rock and a hard place. If the, if the state treasurer says you will in a resolution, city council, give us a name of the person who will fill out that form, and it will be your fin, your chief financial officer, I don't think you have much choice. But we need to answer that question.
We can bring it back. Dave?
Yeah. Honestly, this is not a big deal. What this is, is telling the state who we say collectively is responsible for making the transfer of the funds. That's all it does. If Paula leaves tomorrow, we'll be passing another resolution. The, the point of it is, we are, we're informing the state as to who we collectively say is the responsible party for making those decisions and the transfer of funds and investment.
Actually, what you're doing is saying you're authorizing Paula to sign the form to determine not just her, but who else can move funds around. So, if Paula leaves tomorrow, we still have two other staff people who can move the funds around, and then we'll get you another resolution in a week or two, say, here's the new person who can sign the form if we ever need to sign the form.
Correct. So, for me, this is, this is, you know, we pass resolutions for all kinds of things. They're typically administrative in nature and not statutory or legislative. And so, for me, it's not that big a deal. I, I think it's due diligence on our part, the fact that we actually approve who the person is who signs and makes the decision in terms of if they delegate within their department or not. If someone wants it to be the city manager instead of the Finance Director, you know, or whoever the Finance Director designates, fine, but honestly, I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill.
Somebody, you want to offer up a motion here?
Well, we, I don't think we can, because I guess I would move to carry it to the next meeting because.
You can make that motion.
Okay, that's my motion, because I feel we need to understand the WAC.
Okay.
And, and I would also like to respond to Dave real quick, and I'd just say, Dave, I think you're, I understand your perspective on this. I'm just saying that good policy management doesn't, it names positions, not people, because people change.
Okay. Well, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Could I have that motion be to put it on the next available agenda, once we've answered your questions, because we may not be able to have that done for tomorrow to get it in the package?
I'll ask the maker if that's okay.
That's acceptable to me.
Second? Okay, we're in discussion.
I guess just a question, is there a deadline? Have you been given a deadline by which this resolution needs to be approved by and returned back to the state auditor?
Good question.
Initially, they did. End of December, I called. They, they just gave that deadline because they would like them, they want a target date, they want them, yeah, basically, they want their records updated.
Okay.
As soon as possible, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. At this time, the council will go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation in accordance with RCW 42.30.110 LI and labor relations in accordance with RCW 42.30.140, paragraph four, sub-paragraph A, not to exceed 20 minutes. I'm going to hold you. Let's go ahead and continue the meeting. At this time, we'll go into our first item of all business, which is council rules and a presentation I see as by the city manager.
Yes, Your Honor. Last time we had this item in front of council, we went through a variety of proposed changes to the council rules, got all the way through them with the exception of one, and that was a change to rule number five regarding the presiding officer. So, what I would suggest for discussion purposes, Your Honor, if council would turn to page two of the attachment, that is the council rules, and you will see rule five as it was originally proposed for changing when we last met. And this language was not approved by the council when we met. What the council did was ask me to work the language a little bit and give it to the ad hoc committee that we had put together, made up of council member Thomason, council member Scott, and council member Kaplan, who was filling in for the mayor. So, if you look at the very last page of the agenda item I gave you of the attachment, you will see, unfortunately, not in legislative format, I think I gave the city clerk the wrong attachment, but you'll see item A is as the council had approved, and it was items B and C that council was having issues with. So, B and C represent the new wording that I had put together for the committee, and I apologize, it's not in legislative format, but if you put it next to the B and C from the original document, I think you can see the changes. I attempted to deal with the issues that the council was talking about at the meeting. The committee did not meet, did not make a recommendation, and it's now in front of council for comment.
All right. Dave?
I move to adopt draft resolution number 10-088, adopting changes to the city council rules of procedure and inserting the changes to rule five B and C as proposed by the city manager.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded in discussion. Dan?
I attempted to have rule five B and C removed, and that didn't go anywhere with this group. I do not believe that the city council should give up its rights to the mayor. I do not believe that the mayor, if we're going to use a current example, has indeed promoted a favorable image of the city. And I, I don't believe that the mayor is the person that I want to be the public information officer, essentially, for the city. And I think the city manager should be doing that. So, I will be voting against the change in the rules.
Any other discussion? See none? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that's one nay. All right, next item is an item of new business.
Yes.
Which is the intergovernmental policies and position. And once again, Tony, Your Honor?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is our annual review of the various positions that the city takes in regards to issues that affect us, particularly as they relate to our fellow cities in the region, the county, and the regulations they may have that affect us, the state, for sure, and the federal government. I did make one very small change on page two of the attachment, State of Washington, Des Moines supports restoration of and additional funding for the issues that are there. But I did not make any other substantial changes. I did attach for your information, however, a copy of the AWC 2011 Legislative Priorities. And I do want to point out, right on the very first page, right at the very first item, new approaches to contain public records and personnel costs. There are two big issues that cities deal with when it comes to costs. Obviously, one is our personnel costs. And the binding arbitration rules that the state has in place for us when it comes to public safety, collective bargaining, do not allow certain issues to be considered by an arbitrator, in particular, the city's ability to pay, our economic conditions. Who can be an arbitrator, in other, in other words, what sort of qualifications must they have, and what are the criteria that arbitrators use when they select the comparable cities they're going to look at? So, AWC, and I've been sitting on this committee, has been working on some proposed changes to legislation. And a bill has been drafted, it will be dropped in the hopper next week. I believe Representative Deb Eddy, who represents the area in Kirkland, has agreed to be the prime, and we're very grateful for that. I think it would be a good idea for the council to, if it wants to, go on record as supporting that type of modification to the interest arbitration rules. And then second, the second dot point here, public records requests, I think several staff members can tell you, have become quite burdensome on all cities. In most cases, in practically all cases, we are getting legitimate requests for information that people need because they have a concern about an issue, they're researching something, et cetera. But in some very limited cases, there are individuals who have decided this is a great way to harass the city and, quite frankly, cause it to spend a lot of money. There is a gentleman who is having issues with the city acrosser, who has gone on the record as saying his goal with the Public Records Act, issues that he's asking for is to bankrupt the city. And he's doing a really good job of it. They have sometimes two to three people who are doing nothing but researching their records to, to gather all the stuff up that he wants. So, we are going after some modifications of the public records statute, and in particular, that would allow some sort of reimbursement of extraordinary costs when it comes to the amount of research that we would have to do to satisfy requests. And in no way is it meant to stop people from making real legitimate requests.
It's aimed at stopping abuse of them.
Absolutely.
Counsel? Dan?
So, I would like to suggest some amendments, so we can use the alternate motion. I would suggest under State of Washington, on page six of what the, it's either four or six, but six of the, for this meeting numbered, where it says BB, that we add, first of all, that we add a CC, and to state, and this relates to legislation that's being considered that will help us to develop the Des Moines Business Park, that we put in a statement, "Des Moines supports state tax policies that assist cities in meeting infrastructure needs for new development in airport noise in impacted areas." And that, the legislation, or recommended legislation, has been modified a number of times in order to, you know, get enough votes. Still doesn't have enough votes, but. Still doesn't have enough votes, but basically--
Counselor Sherman, could you reread that? We got about half of it. We're scripted.
"Des Moines supports state tax policies that assist cities in meeting infrastructure needs for new development in airport noise impacted areas." That's basically what we're hoping for, is that the state will give its state sales tax portion to the city so that we could use it for road infrastructure improvements in that area to make it more desirable. And there's some other issues, too, but that at least gets to part of the, part of the issue. So, anyone want to second that as an addition?
Is that Representative Upther Groves?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that? And by the way, that is not an amendment to a motion. That is a motion.
That's a motion to insert it in here.
Right.
Okay.
Okay?
And I know what Councilmember Thompson's going to say.
It's a procedural thing, right? I know what you're going to do. Okay, you want--
Well, no, what I was saying is, maybe we get a half dozen of these things by consensus, and when the motion is made, it's made--
That's fine with me. I'm only bringing it up because he issued it out as an amendment to a motion that had not been made.
Yeah.
I think the consensus is it's--
There's plenty of consensus on that.
The consensus would be to include--
There is plenty of consensus.
Okay. Then I would also recommend a DD that says, "Des Moines supports amendments to binding interest arbitration criteria as outlined in AWC 2011 priorities." Would that need the, need there?
Does it?
People agree on that?
Sure.
Okay. And I've got, my final one is an EE. "Des Moines supports AWC 2011 proposals to manage public records requests."
Yeah.
And that's giving support. We don't know how that's, you know, what the final is, but we're supporting their position.
I'm seeing consensus there. Do you wish to make a motion?
No, but I've got more items to go through.
Oh, fine. Okay.
There's a few of them on here. I had questions about whether we needed to continue them or not. On page three, as the printer's done it, it's B1C6, "Institute the planned rapid transit route along PAC Highway 2 and from the Tectola Sound rail station."
Wait, what page is this on?
It's actually the first substantive page of the policies. It's Item B, intergovernmental policy, Metro King County. It's been implemented. I don't know if we need--
I missed that one. I should have taken it out of your--
My recommendation would be to pull that.
That was number six.
Yep.
The rapid transit route.
Uh huh.
Okay.
We already have it.
Okay.
While we're talking about that one, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The restore service laws to cutbacks in 2000? I mean, that's a bit dated at this--
It's certainly--
It serves a purpose because we want to get our circulator route back.
Well, but that's, I agree, but the whole funding issue--
Well, it's expressing our intent, so.
We want our Route 189. Dave?
Yeah. Under one, excuse me, yeah, under one C, or excuse me, one, how's this? Under one H, "The city opposes reinitiation expansion of the fill mining on Morrie Island." That can be pulled because the property question has been reserved as a park, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Correct.
Hold on a second. Are you addressing this one?
Well, I was just, the one right above it. Well, as long as we're on that page, the 24-hour booking at Kent, didn't I see an email that said that was--
No. What they did is they put back the Monday through Friday, eight to five booking, which was part of the cutting back. They were--
Also, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pull that because any fill-in still needs to be booked in, so.
I think he's okay.
And then on, I'll skip that one for a second. On, on, under, I think it's under State of Washington, no, excuse me, it's under interjurisdictional and regional, for N. "City opposes legislation that limits the city's ability to implement a crime-free rental housing program that reflects its community circumstances." That's kind of moot now. Is it something we should keep in there or take out?
Take it out.
Okay. On, I'm just hoping to shorten the list a little here, and I have one addition, but oh, yeah, okay, I'll leave that one. All right. I'd like one addition that I think goes under the interjurisdictional and regional, so I guess it would be a new N. And what I propose is, "The city opposes any proposal extending Kent's Cross Valley Connector any further west than the southbound I-5 state Route 509 proposed right-of-way."
Go through that again, please, David.
"The city opposes any proposal extending Kent's Cross Valley Connector," and I forget what the actual wrote, "to 228?"
233.
228.
That connects--
Comes up to military.
Correct. "Any further west than the southbound I-5 state Route 509 proposed right-of-way."
Have they talked about this?
"In some of the envisioned or midway discussions, there have actually been drawings having it connect with 30th Avenue South in our city."
And say the very, the southbound?
"Southbound I-5 slash SR 509 proposed right-of-way."
Yeah. And that's how it was originally presented.
Yes. Well, they've been presenting it further west. And I think we just want to make clear, yeah, that's Kent. So, I think we just want to make clear that that's a no-go.
And tell Kent High Line Community--
I'm seeing nods here. Okay. All right. Do you want to add that Kent stopped using Des Moines as West Kent while you're at it?
Yeah.
It's a little late for that, but--
Okay.
I don't know if there's any others or not.
I'm waiting to see. Scott?
Two. On, either the clerk's page seven or page five of the statement, federal, the statement about the airport, Part 150, now they've started it there halfway through it, does this statement still say all of what it needs to say, or would we know that we should say a little bit more, or?
Yeah. I really don't know if we can see anything more than do the study the way the federal law outlines you should do the study.
But I know we had a debate about whether they were or weren't following the law and including who we should include, and--
And I don't think that debate is altered at all by this statement. This statement says, "Force them to do it the right way, and if you think you're doing them, they're doing it the wrong way, then push them."
Then just for, then my only other question is, in interlocal and regional, the item below A, is the ferry dead, and should we take it out?
It's dead. It's very dead.
So--
Should it?
You know, it's funny, because I have that circled, and I thought, you know, we could leave, leave it open to it should some sort of circumstance or money like mana falls from the sky or something.
And the governor did announce today that she is proposing that--
We could have our own ferry district.
Ferry districts somehow take over the state ferry system.
We're already funding one that's going to fund transit.
It's not going to hurt to leave it in, but right now, the issue is definitely dead. So, you know, it's not going to cause any damage whatsoever if you leave it in. None.
I just want, because I'd heard it was pretty dead, so I don't know that we need legislative correction on dead things, so.
Got it.
Do you want to yank it? Anybody else? Okay.
Yeah, I just didn't pull it. If somebody reinvents ferries--
Take it off?
I'd rather leave it there.
Okay.
Who's, let me see. Who was in favor of it?
Be ready for the future.
You want it on or off, Dave? You want it on?
It's six, one, half dozen of the other.
Yeah, but I'm going to ask you, do you want it on or off, Dave?
What do our newest members of the council think? Let's put it that way.
It's costing a buck, isn't it?
Sure is.
Leave it on.
Put it on?
Leave it on.
Matt?
That's fine.
Okay.
I don't feel strongly on that.
Yeah, leave it on. Okay?
Leave it on.
I think we'll leave it on then.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa, for taking the leadership role on that one.
Thank you.
Dave?
I move to adopt the 2011 intergovernmental policies and position as amended by the City Council.
Second.
Any discussion? None? All in favor?
And--
Yes?
As amended by council, as--
Okay, as amended.
Well--
Yeah, as amended by the City Council. That's what I read.
Right. But that's what it says, but--
We didn't amend it.
Yeah.
Revised.
Through the consensus process, you did amend it.
You did. Trust me, you did.
That works.
Yeah, it's fine. It's fine. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none.
Yeah, I just want to say that, just to remind people that this is a set of policies that the city has that you can always rely on as official city positions. So, whenever you're talking with other agencies or other people, you can be confident that if you take these positions, that is the position of the city. And that's why we go through this exercise part.
Absolutely.
And staff will bring it back in its corrected form.
I will, well, with this motion, it's done.
No, and bring it back, so the council will have a copy of--
Yes, oh, absolutely. I'll make the changes tomorrow and distribute it to council.
Very good. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. We're done. Well, that concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you, everyone that came and attended it and spoke.
We need a motion to adj--
And yes, we do.
Removed.
Second?
Removed. Second, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.